Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March fourth. It's nine oh three AM. Uh, we're here for the Board of Ada County Commissioners' Open Business Meeting. Commissioner Davidson and Commissioner Daly are present. Commissioner Beck is absent. And we will just go around the room and have everybody identify themselves for the record, starting in the back.
Bob County Operations.
Saul Zeiler, Ada County Elections.
Robert Berry, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Just Bob Treasure.
Alyssa Allen, Department of Commerce.
Trent Triple Clark.
All right, and we have Scott Kohlberg and Herb Cantu on the bridge. We will start off the meeting with some unfinished business. Can I get a motion?
I move that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So then we'll take up the award of bid twenty-five zero three zero, Ada County Sheriff's Office Marine Patrol boat.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. The evaluation team has reviewed the one bid received for bid two-five-zero-three-zero and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration. Can I have you read it?
Yes, please.
All right, so, dear members of the board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-five-zero-three-zero to Riverview Marina, Inc., DBA Custom Weld Boats as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-two thousand five-hundred-ninety-seven dollars.
All right, are there any questions on the purchase of this new marine patrol boat? Seeing none, uh, would entertain a motion.
I move, we award, uh, bid number two-five-zero-three-zero to Mer- Riverside Marina, Inc.?
Riverview Marina, Inc., DBA Custom Weld Boats.
Custom Weld Boat for one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars?
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll now take up, uh, new business. We have five resolutions on the agenda. We'll move first to Resolution number three-zero-seven-three, and I will open the hearing on that one. Resolution for the conveyance of light bars from the Ada County Sheriff's Office to the Custer County Sheriff's Office. And is that, is that you?
Not me.
No? Okay.
Sheriff's Office, I'm here either.
You don't handle the transfers of property, do you?
I apologize. Um, Chairman, I don't know anything about that one.
Okay, sounds like you read the contract. We're just donating our used light bars from the patrol cars. Is there any other questions related to that one? Doc, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution three-zero-seven-three as listed on the agenda.
I'll close the public hearing on that one.
Yeah, I guess you better close it first.
Second the motion, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we'll now take up Resolution number three-zero-seven-four, Resolution for the Destruction of Documents from the Treasurer's Office. Uh, and I will open the public hearing on that resolution.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm happy to talk to those documents. Um, these are a variety of financial, banking, tax collection, um, records. Um, some of them are permanent records that have been retained not less than ten years. Other have been classified as semi-permanent, retained not less than five years. Um, so it's time to destroy these since they've met the statutory retention periods, and this will also free up some space at the Victim Services Center.
Do we digitize those records or we just, are we talking paper records?
These are paper records.
Do they eventually get digitized and then we dispose of them or are these not needing to be?
Um, Mr. Chairman, so more current or more recent records we've been digitizing. Some of the really old ones we've not gone back to digitize.
Right, are there any questions? If not, I'll, uh, close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve Resolution three-zero-seven-four as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll now take up Resolution three-zero-seven-five, Resolution for Soul Source Procurement of Insecticide Products from Clark. I'll open the public hearing on that, and, uh, is there anybody who wishes to speak to that one?
Mr. Chairman says he's not here. I, uh, I'm somewhat familiar with this in terms of, because I was at, when I was at State Department of Agriculture. The soul source is necessary because there are very few people who do some of these specialized chemicals, and so that's why we're doing soul source.
Right, are there any other questions? If not, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution three-zero-seven-five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll take up Resolution number three-oh-seven-six, which I will open the public hearing for. Resolution for Soul Source Procurement of Insecticide Products from Zealous Agriculture and Environmental Solutions, FKA Adaptco FY twenty-five. Are there any, uh, anyone to speak on that? Any other questions? If not, I will close the hearing and call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution three-zero-seven-six as listed on the agenda for the same reason, soul source reason.
I'll, uh, second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll now take up Resolution number three-zero-seven-seven. I'll open the hearing, uh, Resolution providing for the sale of Ada County personal property by the Ada County Board of Commissioners, uh, decommissioned computer equipment going to computers for kids. Uh, is there any comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, this is just one place we, we just found a way that we could reuse these computers, and I think this is a very worthwhile thing we're doing for kids.
Does that one, does that one go through procurement office for the, you know? It's in charge of the decommissioning of the stuff. Is that by department or? Maybe this is through IT.
I think it's IT.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we found a use for the used, because we go through a ton of surplus computer equipment that we just were recycling every year, so it's great. We found this program that we can help out some kids. Uh, if there's any other, uh, comments or questions, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
I move we approve Resolution number three-zero-seven-seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, that's it for the public hearings. We'll now take up, uh, procurement, opening of RFP two-five-zero-two-two, Design Build Community Transitioner, Transition Center Lift Replacement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Ada County Procurement unfortunately received no proposals on RFP two-five-zero-two-two, so there won't be an opening this morning, uh, but Procurement will work with Ada County Operations to see how they would like to move forward with this project.
And what, what is the lift?
And maybe Bob could talk more about?
Yeah, sorry, Chris Davis. It's a, uh, chair lift that's over at the CDC facility, so it takes you from the ground floor to the upper level, so it's a code requirement. Lift is old and outdated. Uh, we can't get part four anymore, so we've been struggling to try and contain it, so we're trying to get it replaced.
All right, uh, if there's no other comments or questions, would entertain a motion.
Do we need a motion to defer or just, we don't need a motion?
I don't believe so, um, Commissioner. I think that we will come back to with our decision after we meet with operations.
Okay, well, we will move on to, uh, item B, Review of Bids Received and Award Recommendations for Goods and Services, fifty thousand, one hundred thousand on bid twenty-five-zero-four-one, Ada County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, bid two-five-zero-four-one, Ada County Sheriff's Office, Binocular Night Vision Devices and Accessories, twenty-twenty-five, Part Two. Um, Ada County Procurement received ten responses for bid two-five-zero-four-one and would like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation of award for your consideration. I can read the letter if you'd like.
Yes, please.
All right, so, dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received ten responses for bid two-five-zero-four-one. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts received. Number one, Botatch, Inc., in the amount of seventy thousand eight-hundred-thirty dollars. Number two, Benali Promotions LLC, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four-hundred-seventy-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Number three, Blue Heron Tactical Supply LLC, in the amount of eighty thousand nine-hundred-ten dollars. Number four, Focus Camera LLC, in the amount of seventy-one thousand nine-hundred-eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Number five, Maxavision Technologies, in the amount of seventy-two thousand two-hundred-eighty-nine dollars. Number six, Mile High Shooting Accessories LLC, in the amount of sixty-one thousand five-hundred-forty-seven dollars. Number seven, Drellashack and Drellashack, Inc., DBA ProTech Security Sales, in the amount of seventy-four thousand one-hundred-eighty-five dollars. Number eight, Proforce Law Enforcement, in the amount of sixty-six thousand four-hundred-eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Number nine, Steel Industries, Inc., in the amount of sixty-eight thousand seven-hundred-ninety-five dollars and seventy-six cents. And number ten, TNVC, Inc., in the amount of sixty-seven thousand three-hundred-eighty dollars. After reviewing the bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award this purchase order to Mile High Shooting Accessories as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of sixty-one thousand five-hundred-forty-seven dollars.
All right, are there any questions? This is one, I'm wondering why we couldn't get this for the Homeland Security Grant Funds. I mean, we, uh, we have a vote coming up next week for, it sounds like similar equipment. I don't know, Joe Lombardo's not here, so I will ask him there, but, uh...
Um, Mr. Chairman, I believe there is some grant funding going towards this, uh, but, um, I don't have anyone from the Sheriff's Office here to talk specifically on that, but I do believe they're using grant funding.
Okay, great. Uh, any other questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
I move to, uh, award bid two-five-zero-four-one to Mile High Shooting Accessories for sixty-one thousand five-hundred-forty-seven dollars?
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Alyssa. We'll now take up, uh, alcohol licenses and catering permits. Ten licenses, licenses, sixty-five licensed renewals.
And a license and license transfer.
Any questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
I move to approve the catering permits, uh, new licenses, license transfer, and license renewals as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we'll now get a report from the clerk's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you can see, love is in the air. There's a lot of weddings that are being planned, which is really cool. Uh, we're also in the midst of, uh, licensing transfers, uh, as well as renewals, so that's a heavy lift for our office right now. Uh, we appreciate the board's support in, in working through that process, the new alcohol license process and some other things, uh, for us, so, uh, much appreciated from the board. We're also in the throes of legislative cycle, as I'm sure this board is very aware. We do have a couple of important bills working their way through the Stat- State House that will affect elections, uh, in a positive way, and it's been refreshing this year in that legislators have been willing to work with us from the get-go of developing bills. Um, and, uh, we've gotten some very good, uh, positive, uh, changes coming forward with how we administer elections. It doesn't change how or when people vote, um, but it allows election administrators, candidates, campaigns to have a much clearer picture of filing deadlines and, and allows us time to prepare ballots in a way that allows us to keep secure access, uh, to ballots, uh, security, transparency, all the buzzwords, right? Um, they're gonna help us out greatly, so we're, we're excited about this legislative cycle. I can't always say that, uh, every year.
Does that include the moving, uh, the withdrawal date, uh, so it doesn't conflict with the military absentee ballots?
That's exactly what it is, uh, the deadlines for those, uh, withdrawals, so they don't overlap with us trying to get vote, uh, ballots to military voters overseas, which is a huge lift, uh, for us.
Is that moving forward?
It is. It's on the Senate side. Um, I suspect that the committee will take, the state affairs on the Senate side will take it up at the end of this week or beginning of next week. It passed sixty-six to two on the House side, uh, last year, the same bill with a few different things in it. Um, unanimously passed the Senate, so I don't anticipate it being, um, a troubling bill to make it through. There's also some ballot security, um, measures that are going through right now, uh, and it went through on the state side and got a due pass recommendation, so it's out on the Senate side, uh, for a pass. There was one bill that, uh, was proposed on the House side to limit absentee voting, uh, and put some qualifications on it. That did not make it out of committee, so that was a good thing, uh, continuing to provide that access to, to voters who, uh, who want to be able to vote absentee without, uh, uh, an excuse, but... We're also layered on top of budget season, as you all know. Uh, we're getting ramped up for that. And, uh, to, to top it all off, the icing on the cake, we're starting our elections process, uh, for our May election. Um, it looks like libraries, uh, sewer, possibly, G-bad, possibly, and Star Fire will be the ones that will be highlighted for this May election. So, uh, we're excited for that, and, uh, that's it from the clerk's office.
So, just, so, a question, uh, the, uh, so, is there emergency, I mean, i- i- is there, is the timing right so that you can actually, the clerks can actually implement this? Is emergency clause necessary, I guess?
There, there is emergency clause, but it's effective July, so it will not affect the May election. Uh, the timing of that would have really thrown things upside down.
That, that's my, that's my question.
So, it, it will affect the November election, so that new timeline, the, the elections calendar will have to be updated for the state based off this new legislation, so I, I suspect that that will come out as soon as the legislation passes.
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's very simple. It ties it all to the election date, all the filing deadlines, all the, the submittal deadlines for bond language, all that stuff is based off that election date, and it's consistent across all of the different taxing districts, so libraries, um, sewers, uh, all the different ones, cities, municipal, all that has the same filing deadline, so there's no confusion, and it all lines up in, in time for offices across the state to be able to develop the ballot, print it, proof it, and then get it out the door to overseas voters. That's had to happen because we used to have a lot of elections throughout the year. Recently, we even had four, uh, per year, but with the consolidation of elections down to two, now all of these different school districts and everything are, are running their elections on the same election day, which generally coincides with federal requirements for forty-five days absentee votes overseas, so we've had to adjust all that to make it a little bit easier for candidates to follow and election administrators to administer, so... Yeah, it'll be good.
And how's the remodel on the elections office going?
There, Saul's team is, uh, is, uh, champions out there. They're living in the construction. Uh, the elevator shaft looks like, uh, it's almost done. Um, they're really ramping up the top floor to try to get that all in place so that we can move our folks upstairs and then start on the second floor, so it's, it's coming along. Very, very appreciative of the board again for that support too. In fact, that's been a, a thing that we've been using to attract some of the national conferences to Boise is the elections remodel there. When we talk about that, they get excited and they wanna bring their, their groups here to Boise, uh, so that we can show them and highlight what the largest county in Idaho is doing and, uh, words out that we're doing things right, so, um, they wanna come learn from us, which is good.
Good, excellent.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, we will now take up the claims.
I move we approve the claims, General, April twenty-eight, twenty-five, and authorize payment.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to personnel actions.
And we approve the personnel actions, actions as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and we will now hear a report from the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. All is well in the Treasurer's Office. Um, the subsequent rule bills for Taxure twenty-twenty-four, those were due back on February twentieth. Um, so we've sent delinquent notices for those, um, just to make taxpayers aware. They can get those paid to stop the accrual of the mandatory interest. Um, but what's unique about those notices is that we were able to generate those in-house, so thanks to your IT department. Um, our prior practice was that we would purchase the, the forms, the stationery, the templates of the paper, and then a vendor would print, um, into that template. Um, but now your IT department has helped us so that in-house we're creating the entire image, so we have a lot more flexibility, control over our data. This is also gonna save money going forward because we're not having that additional step of having a print vendor print the template, so, um, excited about that, that cost saving, um, and also just more control over our, our records, and just shout out to your IT department for helping us make that happen. And that's it.
All right, any questions?
Yes, so, so that will avoid the problem we had with the printer last year?
Uh, yeah, that could help, yes, mhm. Or at least we'd be able to identify it earlier, yeah, just a lot more visibility into our data before it gets printed.
Great, good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your report. Uh, we'll now move on to the approval of the minutes.
I approve the, the, the minutes, uh, uh, for the engine hearing and general executive session of, uh, February twenty-sixth, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We now have a landfill, um, agenda item, Extension of Landfill Equipment Leases with Echo Equipment Incorporated. And, uh, if Herb is on the bridge there, if you'd like to comment on that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, yes, uh, the item that you have before you is an extension to our leases or rent, rental equipment for, through the end of April thirtieth. We currently have a hauler, a dozer, a drum roller, and excavator, uh, currently being rented. Uh, as part of our fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it's middle, we were planning to procure assets which have been ordered. Uh, currently, those assets are scheduled to be delivered sometime in mid to end of April, so this is driving the process for the need of rental equipment to facilitate supporting the landfill operations. It was also identified during our, uh, assessment of our fleet that we were, um, undersized, and this is what's driving that process for us to support the operations out here for, for the landfill.
All right, any questions for Herb or on this issue? All right, if not, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the extension of the landfill equipment leases with Echo Equipment Incorporated.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll now take up, uh, Expo Idaho Agreements, two interim events.
I move to approve the two interim events as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Back to what, uh, the clerk was just saying. Back to what the clerk was just saying, one of those is a bridal dress express event. So it's in the air, as you said.
Yeah. Right next to the sheep show. All right. We'll now take up parks and waterways, education and event center events.
I move to approve the parks and waterways for event center events as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now have three agreements. Are there any questions on any of the agreements? We have one for fire station alerting system installation at several, at multiple locations. You want to talk about that, Bob?
Uh, they, that's a EMS project for the alerting, it's the light notifications that that come in, so they're doing it in all the paramedic stations and then some of the fire stations where we have a, a joint use in there.
Okay. Thank you. We've got an agreement between Ada County and the Urban Institute for use of juvenile services data. That one, we, I guess we're bringing in an outside agency who wants to do a study on, I think it's juvenile recidivism in the, the juvenile justice system. So hopefully this sharing of info can, can lead to some positive research being done on the issue.
Mr. Chairman, and that's, that's an example of what Trent was saying with the elections. Our juvenile justice system is also, the bridge and some other things they're doing is recognized nationally. So that's part of why they want those statistics.
Indeed. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'd request a motion.
I move we approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll now take up indigent services items.
I move to approve the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now have a miscellaneous item, which is a, regarding a petition, resolution by the Ada County Free Library District for the purpose of creating library trustee zones to ensure each library branch continues to be served by a trustee residing nearby. And apparently under Idaho code, it's falls to the Ada County Commissioners to decide if the boundaries of a library district should be amended or not. We have had the Elections Department taking a look at this, and we have elections here with us. Saul, do you want to talk about the petition or what, how your office has been helping?
Um, yeah, we've worked closely. Thank you, Commissioner. We've worked closely with the library district in providing them information to be able to put together their petition. All that trend speaks to the specifics of this current petition that's in front of the board and requirements that we see under the law with that petition. So.
All right. Trent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two things. We're, we're, we're happy to see them moving in this direction, right? I think it's indicative of what's happening across a, a lot of the state and a lot of the counties in that they want proper representation within the districts that are being represented. You see this with the cities recently and certain populations. There's a push right now in the state legislature to lower that number of, of population required for districting in other cities. So we're, we're seeing this as a positive trend. However, this one, we still feel, fall short based off two things. Proposed zones or districts that they are proposing seem to appear not to have approximate population equality in, in them. And that's just based off our rudimentary look at voters within those precincts. Now that may not be based off the population necessarily, but we've found historically that voters do represent actual population numbers based off those districts. So we feel like there's some disparity there. It's, it's not where we think it should be. We're looking for close to seventy-eight hundred per district. One of the districts currently has close to twelve thousand in it, and another one has five thousand. So there's a wide range in there that we think might be problematic for, for folks in the future. The other is the legal description is based off precincts. And that's problematic too, because precincts' boundaries are subject to change. We already know we're going to be looking at precinct boundaries within a year. We would prefer a legal description that's not necessarily based off precinct boundaries. Right now, it's solely based off precinct boundaries. And so we would propose or recommend the board not approve this one right as it is and work towards a better solution to help them get to where they want to go. This one would be problematic. The other part of this is the timing wise of it. The way we read the statute, it looks like their next regular meeting is on the eighteenth of March and the filing deadline is the twenty-first. That would create a lot of confusion in that they would have to be appointing folks for a period of time, and then their meeting to set those zones and districts would be on the eighteenth. And then if there were people that had already filed, we'd have to amend those filings. They'd only have a couple of days to file for that. We just think it's, it's rushed and we've, we, we don't feel comfortable with the, the pace of how this is, is rolling out. So based off those things, that's our recommendation for the board. But it's up to the board whether or not they want to consider those things. So.
Thank you, Trent. And I know Elections Office has been working on this for a while. And I think the main difficulty is just the unusual shape of the district. It's, it's kind of a U-shaped district that goes all the way from Starr down to, to Kuna, to the southern border, because it incorporates all the uncorporated area that surrounds Boise. And so it's very understandable that you would want to not have every single library trustee live, perhaps living in Starr and then would have no representation in, in Kuna or Southern Ada County. But obviously, it's making it very difficult to find five districts of similar population. Now, we're all familiar with the Supreme Court case that says generally for redistricting, you don't want your districts to be more of a ten percent deviation. Otherwise, it affects the one man, one vote prescription in the Constitution. And these districts, which this is the, I think, the second time that Elections has worked on it, the highest deviation looks, looks to be about forty-nine point nine percent. Is that correct? Commissioner Daley, do you have any comments?
Well, having worked on the redistricting commission, had some experience with this, I, I sympathize with both their goal. Their goal is to make sure that we have each library building have somebody that's adjacent to it that actually is familiar with it. So that's, that's their goal, and it's a laudable goal. But by the same token, we have the, the, as you said, the one person, one vote. That was on legislative districts and congressional districts. It has been somewhat refined by the courts, but not totally for local jurisdictions. So there's still some, not precise clarity on how that is applied at the local level. Matter of fact, one of the, one of the, three of the justices in one of those cases said population shouldn't, other things should be considered other than population in, in deciding at local level. So there, there are some, some issues that I think probably need to be clarified here in terms of, of what. So I think that it's probably worth action. And of course, one of the members of the board isn't here. So I would, I would recommend that we actually go defer to the BOCC in next week and have the chairman here. We could actually consider it. The likelihood of coming to resolution on some of the issues may be, it timely, may, may be out of, out of the realm of possibility. But I would like to have all three of us here considering it and see if we can come up with some, some other ways to address it. So that would be my recommendation. I'll make that motion if the chairman is so inclined to accept that, that motion.
Well, as you say, it's, it's a good goal to have districts where, you know, especially in a large district, you're represented by somebody who lives close to the library in question. Obviously, the concern is with this, the degree of deviation, i- i- if we did pass it, it probably would not hold up in court. And I certainly think there, as you said, there are other things to consider other than the deviation. You, you can make a strong communities of interest argument, but I don't know if the court would, would go for that for a forty-nine point nine percent deviation. So.
Chair, if I might.
Yeah.
This doesn't prohibit them from, a month from now or two months from now, doing, going through this exact same process and considering all of those considerations, right? Population, communities of interest, all that one person, one vote, all those things. There is probably no perfect solution. We have offered up a couple of different variations to get that population aspect of it a little bit closer. All of them have pros and cons to it. It just feels like this is probably, the May election is what is driving some of this, like hurried, let's get this done. They can pass these, or this board can pass these new districts in three months from now. That would put the process in place for them to appoint board members from all of those new zones, whatever those end up being. And they would just sit in, sit in those offices until the twenty-twenty-seven election. So it's not prohibiting them from necessarily moving forward. I just, based off the things that we're seeing, really, the legal descriptions is important for us too, to get that right so that we, we know going forward how to address as populations move and change, because we anticipate that, and especially the western part of the, the county, that they're, they're on solid legal footing for the, the legal definitions for the, the district. So I, I don't think there's necessarily a downside to not approving this as is now, other than they won't hit the deadline for the May election to get them in place.
Mr. Chairman, another, another one of the issues, as, as the clerk said, is voters versus, it wasn't clear in my mind, voters versus population. And the, the courts and the law and the Constitution says population, not voters. So that's another, that's not clear. And then the clarity of what date that was. It's my understanding that it's a population at the last census, and that shifts, as we know, in the ten years between census dates. But that gives a fixed point in time rather than have it as an uncertain point in time of what the population is. Because Starr especially is growing by leaps and bounds. And the twenty-twenty population is not what it is today. And I, I, I know, again, back on the redistricting commission, we had to establish it on April fifteenth on twenty-twenty. And in the analysis of the population, Idaho probably would have qualified for a new, another congressman, even when we were considering the data, but we couldn't consider the updated data. We had to consider the data on the fixed date. So that's one of the things that I think we need to look at as well as a point in time for the populate and point in time, population versus voters. There, there are some issues here that are outstanding, I guess is my, my point that, that I think need to be addressed so that we do have the equity. Make sure voters are, one, the laws complied with constitutionally. People vote for who, for whom they want for in the positions. Because another one of the concerns in my mind is, again, back to my redistricting days, it's difficult to have, to put small and large populations together, especially when geography is, is entailed. So like a Clark County with seven hundred people for a legislative district has to be combined with fifty-two thousand other people. So how do you, how do you put those pieces together and still make it work? And that's kind of what we're dealing with in this. And the odd shape of the district is one of those things that has, has to do there. So I guess, and back to what the clerk was saying, they are, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Trent, but they are going to have to, no matter when, when it's done, they will have to appoint temporary people to fill the, even if we're today, temporary, and we created the boundaries today, they would have to appoint people for those districts and then establish terms for them. And then it would just be the, the length of longevity of the term, whether it's done today or six months from now or next month.
That's correct. If they did it today, they would appoint all new board members for the board to serve in capacity for eleven-ish weeks prior to the May election, and then they would have an election. Now, it's still, there's still question marks about, you know, you need to pick those board members up, three on two-year terms and two on four-year terms. So how that would happen would have to be something that happened pretty quickly so that you knew who was going to be up for, which, well, all five of them would most likely be up in May, but some would be on two-year terms, some would be on four-year terms. If it happened later, they would just be appointed for the term up through twenty-twenty-seven. And then the same process would happen, which would allow probably a more thorough process to take place in terms of who's running two and who's running four and, and all that kind of stuff.
And the current board would do that, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
When we, whatever day, if we were to do it today or next week or two months from now.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Any more?
No.
Any more questions or comments? If not, we can, can a motion.
So I, I, just for the vote, I, I would say we table this vote until the next BOCC, which is, what's the date of that?
On March eleventh.
March eleventh, just so that the, all three of us could be here for that vote.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item has been tabled. And if there's no other business, then we will be in recess. For the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District Open Business Meeting. It's Tuesday, March fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Time is nine forty-four. And Commissioner Daley and myself are present. And let's just have everybody identify themselves for the record.
I'm Captain Robert Vanderstel with Ada County Paramedics.
Sean Marine at Paramedics.
Drumstick Paramedics.
All right.
Elizabeth Duncan Communications.
IT guy. Thank you, everybody. So this is kind of a, we've got a special meeting here because we're doing a employee recognition. And thank you for coming. This is Robert Vanderstel with twenty years of service at Ada County. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, we've got a little, little recognition for you. I'll have Commissioner Daley read the recognition.
Okay. During his twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty, twenty years, it's going to be twenty-five. Twenty years with Ada County Paramedics, the word most frequently associated with Robert Vanderstel is insightful. It is a good term. As well as, as a well-respected field captain, Robert takes a quiet approach to much of what he does. You'd be mistaken if you read the silence for a lack of skill and ability. Quite the contrary is true. Robert's contributions frequently come at the end of the Quite the contrary is true. Robert's contributions frequently come at the end of a long contentious discussion. After he's heard what the room has, has had to say, then Robert is ready to share his thoughts that have a different perspective and are additive to the conversation. I am sure that many of the answers produced by our leadership group are significantly improved by having Robert's insight and perspective. This is a sort of approach Robert uses in all of his professional dealings. It is effective and highly valued. Thank you for twenty years of making Ada County paramedics kept in the care of thoughts and perspective and abilities. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, would you like to say some, some words on behalf of Robert?
Uh, you know, I, I, I was one of Robert's first supervisors, and, and I remember that first year. I don't think it, he said more than about five words that whole year while he was on probation, when we still had that back then. But Robert's been just, you know, a steady hand at Ada County Paramedics for the last twenty years. And, you know, we've all been able to watch him grow as a, a leader and, you know, as a, started out as an EMT and then went to paramedic school and was an FTO. I mean, he's, he's done all of that, and, you know, it's just been a, a really good presence. And we appreciate twenty years of having you around and hopefully many more.
At least eight.
At least eight.
At least eight. Double what I said then.
Excellent. Do you have anything for us?
Oh, the only thing I can think of is that Robert's humor will zing you. It's the driest, dryest, quietest, the quietest. You might, it might land on you what the joke was. It could have been at your expense, and several minutes later. I, I always appreciate that.
Well, I love a, a little dry sense of humor. You need that. Well, do you have any words of wisdom for us after twenty years?
No, just want to keep supporting what we do and, you know, it's a big passion for me. I've loved doing it. I grew up here. I was born here, in Cuna, on the farm, so it's been awesome to work in my community and hope I can finish out my career here.
How, how old were you when you first got hired?
Uh, I started as a volunteer. I think I was twenty two or twenty three.
Excellent. Well, we're glad to have you. Twenty years is a, is a big milestone, so. We've got, we've got this little award for you. We'd like to get a picture with you with, with your bosses here, let the flag, and we'll put that in the newsletter.
Ryan, do you want to stand right near there? How about, actually, we'll remove this way. So John, who wants to stand next to Commissioner Daley in between, so we'll have some. We do the best we can with this setting, so we try to make it look. How about if you guys step forward about a foot? There we go, there we go. Try not to get the desk in there. Okay, here we go. Let me know when you're ready. One, two, three. Very good. Nice. And thank you.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. That's a major milestone.
Yeah.
Good job, good job.
Anything more?
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Have a good day.
Yeah.
Came in on his four days off.
There you go.
Got dressed up, too.
Yeah, yeah, besides.
That's great. All right, so we'll move on to Claims Journal and Underdue Business.
I move to approve the claims, EMS Claims Journal dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll take up now the Personnel Actions.
I move to approve that the EMS Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We will now take up the Approval of Minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the EMS District Services dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We now have two agreements, Agreement Number three zero three six six, three zero three six seven. Any discussion on any of those items?
Basically, I don't say university paramedic program.
Yes, Commissioners, this is two of our EMTs that are going to be going to ISU for paramedic school. And so they say in a, sign a contract that if they leave within a certain amount of time, they have to pay back that time. We allow them to go to class while they're on duty, so.
Well, hopefully, they stick it out, though.
Yeah, usually they do.
So I, so ISU, that's, they gotta, they gotta stay up there, live up there, like you?
Or is it here?
It's here at the.
Oh, it's here.
Meridian campus, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, and we actually, Rod Hackwith is the program director, and he's actually employed by Ada County Paramedics. And the reason being is that in order to be the director of a paramedic program, you have to have a state license. But you can't have a state license unless you're affiliated with an agency. And so with, without him being there, you know, I don't know what kind of program we would have here. And so it's been a really good relationship that we've had with ISU, and Rod's done an excellent job as the director out there.
Good.
All right, would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agreements three zero three six six and three zero three six seven as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of the board.
Well, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Brings us to EMS update.
Yes, good morning. Biggest update for today is House Bill two oh six and two oh seven passed the House last Wednesday. And then they were heard in the Senate State Affairs Committee yesterday morning. Got out with a due pass on that with a unanimous vote and the affirmative. So it's on its second reading today, and so hopefully in the coming days, it'll be heard on the Senate floor and, and then off to the governor for signature if it makes it through that whole process. So that's, that's going well down there. I did learn a little bit of probably why GMT has slowed down at, at Idaho Medicaid, and it's because their CFO and one of the other people in the financial division left the Department of Medicaid and, or the Division of Medicaid. And so they've got one person now that is working on what was three people. So that's probably what's slowing it down. So unfortunate, but what do you do?
That happens.
Yep.
That's the process.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And I guess we will, we have one more item.
Can we have a motion to amend the daily because legal staff has been canceled?
Which was canceled?
Legal.
Legal.
Oh, that's right.
Legal staff's canceled.
I move to approve the, the agenda to remove the legal staff at nine thirty.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The daily agenda is amended. And with that, we will be in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.